The legions. Of the United States of America.
Into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As you were. Before I call the meeting to order, I would like to recognize Mrs. Allison Bond. Is she present? Can you please step forward? I have a proclamation here for you, Mrs. Bond, the village, Ms. Bond. I would like to thank you for your service to the village. And I'm going to read this proclamation. Whereas Allison Bond has demonstrated unwavering dedication and selfless service throughout her life as a member of our community at large and as a longstanding member of the Sag Harbor Tree Fund, which was established in March nineteen ninety-four to preserve and replenish the urban forest compromised of trees that line the streets of this historic whaling and resort community. Whereas her tireless efforts in research and helping to create and maintain the street tree inventory in giving of her time, knowledge, and assistance in the publication of Plant a Tree for Sag Harbor, which encourages donations from citizens, resulting in the purchase and planting of over three hundred and sixty commemorative trees and plaques have impacted the beauty and vitality of Sag Harbor Village. Whereas Allison Bond's steadfast commitment over these many years has been a cornerstone of support within her community, inspiring those around her to join in community service to maintain and expand the tree scape of our village. Whereas Allison Bond's long legacy of service continues to enrich the lives of all who have had the privilege of knowing her. And therefore, let it be proclaimed that today we honor and celebrate Allison Bond for her extraordinary contributions to her community and beyond. We acknowledge with profound gratitude her dedication, her exemplary life of service, and the lasting impact she has made on the world around her. On behalf of the Board of Trustees and the residents of the Village of Sag Harbor, it is my honor and privilege to present you with this proclamation to Allison Bond. Signed this fourteenth day of January twenty twenty-five, Thomas C. Gardella, Mayor of Sag Harbor Village. Right. Let me just say thank you personally, and it does show that people like yourself that step forward can make a difference, make a difference in the world, make a difference in their community. So again, thank you very much for all your efforts. I think we're all, most of us are all, or all of us are descended from immigrants. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and all my trusty friends for this honor. I'm a little embarrassed, but I wasn't, I became a member of the tree fund only about late nineties or two thousands. So I haven't been all the way through. However, I stand on the very tall shoulders of the people who founded the tree fund. It was nineteen ninety-three, and they set about examining and making plans, visionary plans, and working with the village and actually with, I'm not sure what it was, the some state department of forestry. And in nineteen ninety-six, started their first projects. And I'd like to just pay some attention to those people because I think they're important.
Of course.
One of them, they all had a vision. They all were very hardworking. The head of the tree fund at that point was Lois Underhill. And people on that, on the first committee were Gail Slevin, late Gail Slevin, Debbie Jacobs, Alexandra Eames, and other people. And then after that, sort of quite soon after, Matt Griswold, who was a landscape gardener and expert on trees, everything, joined. And she and Sean Conrad, who was a lawyer, became active. And so it's on their shoulders that everything I've done makes sense. We've also had a great deal of support from people like Ed Hollander and Deplan Blackmore of Summer Hill. And I should also recognize the multiple donations made by Adrian Harris and Jeanette and Paul Warner. Warner's planted something like sixteen or eighteen trees over the years. All those wonderful sycamore trees that line along and don't fall down. So thank you very, very much for this, and I will do my best to go forward. I have something for you. Do you have this brochure?
Mayor, you have that framed too.
Yes, so. I sent you with that.
This is the brochure. I'm afraid we're running short of them.
Be careful of this. Don't drop it. Let me, let me ask you one last question, if I can. What do you, how do you consider the current state of the trees in the village? And is there any more work to, well, there's always work to be done. But at the current.
But I should also add that one of my greatest pleasures is riding in Dee Yardley's red truck, and we go and look for
Okay.
And we look for places that there's a spot, and he tells me where we can't.
He gives you a good, right. So we're working together. Everybody's working together.
Oh, I couldn't do it without the Yardley.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much. So I'll call the meeting to order now, and we'll start with the approval of minutes. Motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on December tenth, twenty twenty-four. Need a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting, which was a parking workshop held on December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Corris. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. That brings us now to our Department Committee Reports and our Treasurer. Charles, will you start off?
Good evening, Mayor. Steve. Kind of a broken record. Good news is that there are no surprises this month. Even though things slowed down, our revenue streams still continue, and we're ahead. All our major areas, the building department, the Justice Court, and the Village Hall components that generate revenue are ahead of budget and ahead of last year. As you know, the docs sent out the renewals early December. By the end of this month, January, we'll have a good idea where we stand with that, but all indications are it's going very well. On the expenditure sides, again, no surprises there, following along with our budget for the most part. Large expenditures that we made during the month were for retirement benefits, about a million one, and the service award programs for the ambulance board and the fire department, about seven hundred thousand. Those are annual contributions where we fund those programs.
Let me ask you a question on that.
Yeah.
So we've lowered the age to sixty-two for when members can start to collect their low SAP benefit. How, how have you seen that? Is, what's going to be the impact of that in the future? Do we need to make adjustments at some point or?
We're starting to build that in now, trying, so that we don't hit a cliff.
Right.
Or a mountain, if you will. We're starting to, we're trying to build up to that so we have it pre-funded.
Right.
The other comment is, I think, as you know, I sent out an email later this week. We're going to get the proceeds from our fan issuance. It was very successful. We're going to borrow three million dollars for the first year of the sewer construction project. And that's really just to fund the cash flows because we're going to have to lay out the cash for construction before we collect on the grants. Good news, it was successful in the sense that we had six bidders, so it was very competitive. And the low bid was going to have us pay about three percent, which is, it's very favorable.
Okay.
You know, also, kind of an added bonus, some of our money market accounts where we have our funds currently, our excess Village funds part, pay more than four percent. So over the near term, we could actually make a little money on this, you know. There's going to be ins and outs, but all in all, it was a very good result.
That's great. Any questions for the Treasurer? Thank you, Charles.
Thanks, Charles.
That brings us to the Police Department, Fire Department, and Ambulance Corps reports. The Police Department, in the month of December twenty twenty-four, had six hundred and sixty-five calls for service. We had four aggravated unlicensed operation. We had eight suspended registrations, two DWI arrests, one assault, and we had twelve motor vehicle accidents. And that concludes the police report. The Fire Department. In the month of December twenty twenty-four, the Fire Department volunteered for over nine hundred and thirty-six man-hours. During the month, the officers and members of the department responded to a total of forty-seven calls for service. These calls included two structured fires, two motor vehicle accidents where injuries were involved, and one completely destroyed by fire. So the vehicle was destroyed, one gas leak, and numerous fire alarms. With the holiday season upon us, it has been a tradition for Sander to make his arrival at the windmill with the fire truck. We also gave him a ride to North Haven to visit kids that were on his good list. Stay safe and have a happy new year. That report's from our First Assistant Chief, Mike Dyer. That brings me to the Ambulance Corps. In the month of December twenty twenty-four, we had seventy-one emergency calls. That's down slightly from eighty-seven and twenty-three. We had five work nights, two meetings, for a total man-hours of eight hundred and fourteen. So the year-to-date for twenty twenty-four was eight hundred and forty-nine emergency calls, just under eight fifty. We had fifty-two work nights, twenty-four meetings, thirty-one training sessions, three drills, twelve work details, two parades, and three standbys for a total of eleven thousand, eleven thousand five hundred and ninety-two man-hours. I just want to mention that I am a member of the Fire Department, as many people know, and I attended the Fire Department meeting, Department meeting last night, and our firehouse is in, it's aging out. Out of all the firehouses, and believe me, I've been to almost all of them, between the seventh and ninth divisions, which is the Southampton side and the East Hampton side, our firehouse is in the worst condition. The building is aging out. I fully intend on moving forward with the project that we've started. We have test pours being done at the site up at the impound lot where the old so-called dump was, to make sure that the site is safe, to relocate the DPW. It's part of the plan. We have the plans drawn up for the new emergency services building. So in the next coming months, I intend to move forward with this project. We owe it to our volunteers. We owe to, owe it to them. It's our responsibility to make sure that they have pride in their firehouse, they have pride in this village and the job they're doing. And right now, the firehouse is, we had a meeting this morning, I had a meeting with Dee and Michael Cohen, and we discussed it. We're doing everything we can just to maintain the conditions that are there now. So it's something that we need to move forward on. I just wanted to mention that to the community in closing. So that concludes my report. That brings us to Deputy Mayor Hay for the Justice Court, Parks and Urban Spaces, and the Planning Board. Bless you.
Thank you, Mayor. So in the month of December, there were a hundred and thirty-seven cases opened, eighty-four vehicle traffic violations, three criminal, two civil, fifty parking, volumes down considerably from the peak seasonal months. We also have the year-end numbers in. Total cases for twenty twenty-four that were opened were over ten thousand, which is really twice the number of cases almost from prior years. And a lot of those, the highest volume are probably, frankly, parking tickets. And this year, the revenue stream from parking tickets was significantly above prior years. You know, we've talked about previously, we had ten TCOs all summer this year. We had a high volume of traffic coming through the village, a lot of parking in the village. Gross numbers that came in were over a hundred thousand dollars. We haven't received the deducts from New York State for the, for the last two months, but my guess is net numbers will still be in excess of six hundred and fifty to seven hundred thousand dollars, which is by far the highest we've collected in prior years, consistent with what the Treasurer reported. That's it for the Justice Court. The Justice Court is spending these winter months catching up on the volume, the overwhelming volume that comes through in the summer months, frankly, and so they're closing more cases than are opening, which is great. In addition, Parks and Open Space, we haven't had another meeting since our last Village Board meeting. One update I can give is on the County Road Seventy-Nine work by Suffolk County DPW, the county's engineer and the village engineer, traffic engineer, will be meeting
Wow.
tomorrow, tomorrow morning, to talk about the proposals that have been given back and forth between the village and the county about the entrance to Mash Park, as well as the intersection and bike lanes, pedestrian safety along County Road Seventy-Nine as you enter the village. A number of other things in the works, but nothing yet to report out on for Parks and Open Space. That committee will be meeting again this Thursday. And I think I'll leave it at that.
Okay, that brings us to Trustee Corris for the Sewer Department, Village Grants, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. Trustee Corris?
Thank you, Mayor. The report for December, the sewage treatment plant, total gallons received were two million sixty-eight thousand. We removed twenty thousand gallons of sludge. DMR reports are forwarded on the tenth of January. Suffolk County DHS inspection date, next inspection will be the eleventh of February. And New York State D E C inspection date is open, and we have no complaints. The wastewater treatment plant's running well, under all permitted levels. We're now operating just two of the five basins. The Flylight Mixer on Basin Number Four was sent out for rebuild, which is a piece of equipment in there. All grease traps were inspected with four failures. These were pumped out with re-inspection. They passed. One of our newer employees, Mike Rock, has been, he's updated at the moment, taking Phase Two of his operators, I think it's two out of three exams. He passed Phase One, which is a huge deal, and I'd like to offer him my heartiest congratulations. The more, the more licensed operators we have in the plant, the better for everybody in this community. So Mike has completed past Phase One. He's upstate right now. I will be taking. He passed two? Oh, breaking news. He passed Phase Two, which is fantastic. And then our newest employee will be starting the same routine. So right now, we have Dee, Dee's obviously runs the plant, and Franz Scoboni is a licensed operator. And these are two young gentlemen. Wonderful to have them, really. These are, these good guys are two young gentlemen that have worked at the plant. It's wonderful to have them, and the fact that they're keen and they're putting in the effort to do this is, there's testament to their commitment to the plant. I'd like to thank them and the village for sending them up there. That concludes sewage treatment plant grants. We had a pending grant with New York State with the with the D E C for five million plus, which was for Phase Two A of expansion of the plant. Unfortunately, we were not successful. That's happened with us before with New York State. We will have a follow-up meeting with them, find out what aspects of our application caused us to fall short. We will resubmit. The resubmission will be in July of this year, and then we will have, we should hear again in December. These, the results for the general funding applications usually come out late December. We had an initial meeting today to East Hampton CPF Water Quality Committee. Their next round closes on the fifteenth of February. So we had a meeting today to discuss applying for grant money to do engineering work to connect the schools to the sewage treatment plant. Schools are sort of nitrogen factories, and they run countercyclical to the plant. So you know, they're closed in the summer when the village is busy. So we'll see how that application goes. That brings us all up to date with grants and sewer plant, and I have no report from Z B A, from the Z B A board. Everything there is running very smoothly. A great board. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Trustee Corris. That brings us to Trustee Plum with Public Works, Board of Historic Reservation and Architectural Review Board.
Thank you, Mayor Shizzi. The Public Works of all leaf collection program has been completed. All roads were swept with the can of the room, on completion. Highway maintenance crews assisted with decorating the village for the holiday. I assume de-decorating too. Asphalt repair and patching continues as needed. Crews continue full cleanups on village shoulders and road ends, and the village trucks and snow equipment have prepared for the snow and ice season. As far as the H P A R B goes, we are the architect that we have reviewing plans prior to the meeting. And then, now what we're doing is we are having a work session at five before the meeting, it's open to the public, to discuss the applications. And then they move into an open regular meeting, and the board members have had a chance to look at and see what they're talking about in terms of the applications. So that, that's working well, and we're still looking for architectural consulting, so kind of fit in with that group to improve the, I guess you could say, the aesthetic aspects of their decisions. Today, I went up to the Vanderbilt Museum, which is in Centerport, which is an amazing place. I've never been there before. It's, it's, you know, it's Vanderbilt's old estate. And, and there was, there was a meeting of the Robert L. Gardner Foundation, and it was, it was a presentation on how they give grants and for what, what they can do. And it was very interesting. There were a lot of people there that I was able to speak to, and I know Zach talked about the old burial ground.
Yep.
And we just, in general, but it was, it was an interesting meeting.
I think we're going to have to issue some protections, and we'll work with council on this to protect that space from people possibly going in there and poaching or doing things they shouldn't be doing. At least, at least put some signage up.
Right. You know, we, we talked about the, the condition of the cast iron fence, which is obviously terrible. And similarly to what we did at the, at the Civil War Monument, where they're used a hundred fifty dollars per picket. They were made. That's a bigger project, but we could also go to a bigger foundry. And, and if you have one, you can give them for a pattern and a newel and a cap, and they can make a thousand feet if you need it. So with Zach, we're trying to kind of get that ball rolling again in terms of, of starting a I guess, a project to finance that.
Right.
To get it done. Anyway, and then this is from Mary Ann. This is the Climate Action Committee. Says here, abrupt decrease in construction trucks parked on either side of Madison and Jermaine. Now make it easier and safer to be a pedestrian. It says, thank you, Mayor Gardella.
You're welcome.
Last week, we had a NYSERDA.
Thank the police force for enforcing it and being out there and making sure. I mean, look, they, they try as hard as they can to, you know, keep those trucks off the sidewalk and but they're, they, you know, sometimes there's a call that's more important, that somebody's in distress, and it can't always be there twenty-four seven, but they definitely have stepped it up.
Right. Last week, we had a NYSERDA consultant, I don't know what this thing, a guy from the state audited Village Hall in terms of energy efficiency, and he's going to be reporting on what he, we, we got a fifty thousand dollar grant for installing solar panels at the S T P. So the grant is to, and I think we're going to focus on this building and for energy upgrades. And I personally think Storm Windos is where to start, but he's going to give us a report on that. And also this Vanguard Business Solutions, where I take it as a local business that contacted you, and they're also going to do a, a more general study of the local, of the village buildings for energy refits. And they do that actually at no charge unless you wind up using them, and then it's, so it's great.
There's a, what's called, they termed it a nuisance fee of like, I think it was seventy, seventy-five, seven thousand dollars. If they do all the work and all the assessing and come up, they work closely with P S E G, so they get, or they put the application together to get the utility company to pay for up to seventy percent of the project. So they do all the legwork. They'll come up with a number. Our commitment would be for seven thousand dollars for them to do the assessment. They would come up with the project, and then we would make a decision whether we wanted to go forward with it or not. But we, according to council, we have to get other prices from but to my knowledge, there's nobody that I know that provides the same service, but we'll have to look into that.
The procurement policy is three letters. It's just the three letters, not a full.
So we're, that's, we're in the process of working on that.
The compost collection is stopped. More than one thousand two hundred pounds has been diverted from the dump. And this is the ongoing the tree preservation code, we're talking about some more, but also the metal roof glare, which has been an issue in the village. I've been, I've been researching this. The problem is that in most cases, bright roofs are, are useful because they keep the buildings cooler. And so reflectivity, as it's called, is, is not a bad thing in most cases. And so the idea is that, but it's very difficult to come up with a numeric value to, to give to a reflectivity percentage to a material in order to put it into the code. We're still looking at it. Most metals oxidize, even stainless steel oxidizes. Apparently, the, the color is more important than the material. Like, obviously, white reflects more than black. So anyway, that's an ongoing research area, and that's my report.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee Plum. That brings us now to Trustee Kane with the Building Department, Harbor and Docs, and the Harbor Committee.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll start with Harbor Docs. Harbor Master Bory and Duryave completed putting new decks on all the dinghy docks, along with installing new cleats, and then they're going to be putting new numbers down so that people will know exactly what, what their slip is with the new docks that was needed. And then on December thirteenth, the ramp on B Dock was separated from the bulkhead with the weather that we had. That fortunately, Jeff Backy from Hampton Carene was able to quickly come and repair it so that we didn't have to have any additional damage or we don't need to replace it. So we are grateful for that. We've, the Harbor Masters have also been really busy beginning the process of all the applications for the docks for, for the coming season. As of now, about three hundred and fifty-one applications have been completed, which is about eighty-three percent. That doesn't include the Transients or Havens Beach, but gives you an idea where they are. So it looks to be a success. And we'd also like to thank the Harbor Masters and the Dock staff for a great year with DAWA, which we've been working with DAWA, which is the the system that we use to, for the application process, and we've been working with them since two thousand and eighteen. So this is the seventh year in a row that Sag Harbor has been voted and awarded as a boater's choice. We get that, we got that recognition. And then this year, we also were awarded the Elite Fleet status. So nice to know that we're getting some good publicity for the hard work that our team is providing. And then last, just for everyone, we all know that we got the new patrol boat this spring, which was very exciting. In order to protect that and preserve that, that's been removed from the water, winterized and shrunken wrap to preserve that. And so as soon as we get away from this tougher weather and the ice, we're going to leave that where it is. We'll bring it back when appropriate weather-wise. If there is an emergency, we will use the twenty-six-foot fireboat. So just for everyone to be aware of that. And then on to see where we are, for this, starting from December one, we are running for two thousand and twenty-four, the last month of December, it was over four hundred thousand dollars of revenue that came in. That compares with With twenty, sorry, about just under three hundred for two thousand and twenty three. So it's a three hundred, or sorry, a thirty six percent increase. Over last year. So we seem to be running at a very good pace. Same way for the, the Building Department. The revenue that we received for the month of December was a little bit over sixty thousand. That compares to about fifty two thousand for last year. So that was running about sixteen percent of last year's month of December. But for looking at the whole calendar year for the Building Department. This year was over a million, just over a million. That compared with about seven hundred and fifty thousand of last year. So it's a forty percent increase over last year. So we really. See how busy they are and the work that's being done and the revenue coming in. To give you an idea. Eight building permits were issued this past month, seventy three inspections. And fifteen certificate of occupancy for rental permits, seven. New rental permits were issued for the month of December. So for the total, so it's very, you know, given that this was our first year. It's a hundred and forty eight rental permits that we did for the year. We're still, the owner occupied, which was the new piece that we put in the summer. We only have three year to date. So that's something that. We will keep an eye on and try to continue to encourage. And then for, from the param marshal. He was busy, had fourteen complaints taken and addressed. Nineteen fire safety inspections, fifteen violations were out and then. Ten technical assistance and eight hours of training. So we just want to thank them for all that hard work and Harbor Committee continues to be running smoothly.
Thank you, trustee Kane. I need a motion to accept the treasurer's report and the department reports.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Corish.
Second.
Second, Deputy Mayor Hayles in favor? Posed, so moved. That brings us to our public comments. Fifteen minute public session. Input for comments and questions limit three minutes per speaker concerning the treasurer's report. And the department reports which were just presented. Anybody like to speak? Mary Ann, would you like to?
Mary Ann, the eight ninety six Hampton Street. Something came up in your report when you were talking about the new proposed emergency service building. That if we decide on one of these vendors to do an assessment of our buildings, we should have a look at the plans that we have. So we don't go and build something that's out of date. So. The other thing, and it has to do probably more with the police department than anything else. I think we're all aware that there's a new federal administration coming in. And that one of the things that's been talked about a lot is that day one, there's going to be mass deportations. Now maybe this is bluster, maybe this isn't going to happen, but maybe it is. And maybe we need to have some level of awareness. As to how we should respond and what our rights and responsibilities are. I have no idea what those are, but I looked up a bit on the internet. And. This was from January nineteenth, two thousand and seventeen. I didn't see anything that's out there now from Tish James. This was from Eric Schneiderman. But it's a twenty eight page document, guidance concerning local authority participation in immigration enforcement and model sanctuary provisions. So probably a lot of that is still current. The other thing that I found is Long Island County told to pay sixty million dollars to illegal immigrants for detaining them. At federal government's request, officials. So the county is on the board or on the hook for that. And then the other thing I came up with is New York City preparing school buses after possible ice encounters. So various governments are kind of taking a look at what their roles and responsibilities are. And I hope we do that as well. So.
We, listen, we. We'll keep an eye on it. So that's all I can tell you. I haven't had anything come down and, you know, the new administration has not taken over yet. So. We'll deal with it as it comes up, but.
Well, I hope we just don't have something and we react without knowing what our roles are. That's all. Thank you.
We haven't done that in the past, so I don't think it's going to happen now. I'm not going to overreact or.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Richard Ryan, eighteen Bridge Street. I'd just like to pass a comment about the sewer projects, not the sewer projects, I'm sorry. Sewer availability request that's going to come up shortly. I, I would request that you would at least take into consideration the sculpting process that is currently going on. On that piece of property. Any decisions made because you as well know, every month we come here, the sewage is over two million gallons. And plus, and we have that smell right after the festival. Before anything is put more into the system. That's open process needs to be addressed, which they are looking into the water treatment. So I think that should be taken into consideration before any decisions are made.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, let's go to Douglas first.
Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, trustees, this is all happening here to everyone. I have two unrelated questions, one to the treasurer. I'm wondering. What the status of the audit of the. May thirty first, twenty twenty four financials is, I know last year, obviously. So there were some delays there, just wondering. Any sense of when that should be ready? And the second one, and apologies if this is something that's been covered previously and I've missed, but. There are the two items on the agenda about the. The A Doc, both the secret review and the approving finance. For construction improvements and I'm just wondering if you could describe a little bit of exactly what, what's entailed with. This is a fairly substantial bond approval.
We've, well, the current situation down there, Douglas, is that we've had, we have smaller vessels that are tied up to a. I don't know if you're familiar with it. They have like a rope system, cable system. And it's become, that's become untenable because of the rise of the water rising. And we were told this years ago that eventually. When we rebuilt that bulkhead, that this, this was going to occur. So this, so what we've done is eliminated those cables. We've put in. A permanent ramp coming off the dock. There are plans available that you can look at with a floating dock connected to it. And these. Spaces that are going to be taken up are smaller vessels. They're twenty five feet and under. So. It, the expansion is needing, the infrastructure needs to be upgraded. We're talking about adding a walkway. Along the bulkhead to, to, to do that connection which connects the waterfront or to extend that to make it safer. I also discussed putting bathrooms and a shower down there. As it stands right now, there's no amenities. For the people that are, you know, paying for those slips, they have to go, they would have to travel over. To near Marine Park to use the facility. So I think that, that's something that we should consider for them. And it's just part of our process that we go through when we have to do upgrades and. You know, keep our harbor, you know, top notch.
And, and the one thing that I would add. Mayor described the replacement of the cables, but the A Doc itself is. This will really be the last season that we can feel that. People can be safe on it. It's a time that it, it needs to be, that was initially put in in the seventies. So it's really done its job. They've repaired it many times. And so we will be replacing it. With new material or the, the plan is, and it will be. You know, not the pilings, it'll be a floating and there'll be lower maintenance and we look for that to have. Minimum of thirty year and potentially longer. So that's the plan.
Okay, thank you. That's really helpful.
Thanks, Douglas. Missy, Hessler?
Before, there's another question he had for Charles to answer.
Oh, Charles, you want to go ahead? Yeah, address the.
Doug, to your question about the timing, actually the audit is just getting underway. It's later than we would like, but I think they're just small village relatively low on the auditor's priority list, you know, they do tax returns, the bigger places. But it's, it's currently underway. It should finish sooner than it did last year. I'd be very disappointed if it didn't. But in addition to audited financials, we're required to submit to the state, and I believe they're posted somewhere on the controller, the state controller's website. Our unaudited numbers for the fiscal year just ended. So it's under the reference of annual financial report. So if you're interested, you could probably find what our results were. I'll be unaudited, but you know, we're not expecting any significant changes.
Okay, thank you. And good luck.
So we have Missy?
Yes.
Missy, you'd like to introduce yourself?
To talk about your comment earlier about the emergency services building. And I agree that the fire department needs work just as much as the ambulance barn needs work. We can't even buy newer vehicles because they don't fit in our building. And I think the community needs to realize this and maybe if we do little small steps on putting it out there and what our plan is to get people involved and to know what's happening. It might be better. I mean, we have our garage doors are broken right now. We, for our ambulances to even get out. So it's just, you, you're right, the village needs to do what it needs to do for us, you know, where they're helping people twenty four seven. So I think it's important.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else need any comments? Okay, that brings us to introduction, which we have no introduction. That then brings us to public hearing. We have a local law to amend local law, amending village code, chapter eighty five assemblies mass public. Do you want to just talk briefly about this?
This was opened last time and adjourned and this is a local law to substitute to. Assemblies law with a special event law with similar provisions, but some changes.
I'm about to give you more food, so.
One of the changes was going from seventy five people to fifty, so it's triggered with less people. It covers indoor events that are also, and also indoor part outdoor events. So it encompasses more events. It did increase the application process to require it to be submitted sixty days instead of thirty days ahead of time. And then there are some other changes, but I, I don't know that it can be adopted tonight because we didn't have the. Fees done in conjunction with this, but it's up to the board.
Can I, can I also say, it also, it also. Covers four categories now of events, residential, commercial. Public spaces, events on public spaces and events on public streets. Trustee Corish, trustee Kane and I met with the. Chamber of Commerce yesterday evening and, and gave them an overview of it as well. And so I don't think we need to or want to necessarily approve it tonight or vote on it tonight. Think we want to, even if, even if it weren't for the counties, we'd want to adjourn it to next month as well. The chambers agreed to give us comments on it between now and then as well. And if the public would take a look at it, it applies to everybody in this village now, residential, commercial. Anything in open spaces, even in your home sometimes. Residential events over fifty, it would potentially apply to you as well. We were encouraged comments back on this.
I have one comment which we shared last night is I'm not a hundred percent. Sort of aligned with the idea of having a single price for all the various locations in the village. That if I was to have a, have an event that took in Marine Park. And some other location like Simon Beck Park in the village, that it was a flat thousand dollar fee. Is what, as opposed to having a price on each location. So if I take four locations, it's a thousand. If I take one location, it's a thousand. I think that that somehow needs to be aligned with. That you should pay for the space you use. So either you're either overpaying or underpaying, one way or the other.
I, I would say. You're underpaying for everything. None of those fees cover the costs that the village incurs for those events. And I think if you. I'm not disagreeing with you, but I'm not agreeing with you either because I think simplicity helps us tremendously. In enforcement of this and monitoring administering this. And we have, you know, for example, if you have an event that just uses Windmill Beach, I mean, do we have a fee structure for every single piece of property in the village? That we have to update every year and that would be problematic from.
But then it would be a thousand dollars for Windmill Beach or a thousand dollars for Windmill Beach, Long Wharf and Marine Park for argument's sake.
I'm sorry to interrupt the village clerk who informed me that you need to actually open this public hearing. I thought it was.
I need a motion to open.
Second.
Motion by trustee Corish, seconded by deputy mayor Hayles in favor. Should we hear this conversation again? So now we're technically open for comment.
Yeah, that's just my comment on that.
I have nothing else to say.
I'm a little, you know, I, I want to take a closer look at this because we're increasing fees. I mean, my. Thought is, what is the? What is the driving factor for us to have more fees, more regulation within the village? Is it because they're a problem? Are we trying to solve a problem? What are we trying to achieve with this?
Can I say?
That's my basic.
Not necessarily increasing fees. We haven't been enforcing the existing fee structure. We're simplifying the fee structure. Not necessarily increasing the fee structure. There are going to be pluses and minus each way where this goes in terms of the overall fees.
Right.
But we haven't enforced the fee structure for three years for this. And one of the other items that'll be on the agenda.
And, and it was also just looking at some things in the code to. Give some flexibility to some of the establishments so that they could. Host different events that currently they're not able to do so. So that's where there, there are different aspects of it.
So that's another different part, which I happen to agree with. I'm just talking about this, the public spaces and what we're charging and that's all. I think just need, you know, we need to come to consensus on it. That's all.
Right.
That's.
We might get some color from tonight.
Does anybody in the public wish to comment on this? Ellen?
I wish to, it's not exactly what I have. Ellen, you have already turned to Third Street Maya. I, I wanted to make a couple of comments on behalf of the several chamber of Congress, president of the chamber. But I have to preface this. We didn't have time last night after we met for the. Chamber to get a consensus of what would be said tonight. So the apologies to my fellow chamber board members and the caveat that while I am speaking as the president of the chamber. We've not formally put anything together for tonight's meeting, but I'll take the hit if it comes that way. First of all, I want to thank Ed Hay, Aiden Corish, Jean Kane for coming to our members' meeting last night. The board agreed it was a productive meeting and we should have members of the village board at our chamber meetings to discuss things with, which affect the business community more often. So we'll work on that. The direction the village, and this is not about this, but it's here, so I'm just going to jump to it. The direction that the village board is taking on applying employee parking looks positive and we all agreed last night that making any kind of dent and helping find a solution to where at least decent number of workers. Who keep all the businesses inside Harvard going to park would be amazing. If we could even keep a hundred cars out in business district, both in parking spaces and on the roads driving around looking for parking, it would be an noticeable improvement. So I wanted to thank you for what you're working on that. Discussion about the change in special advantage permits and fees for the use of village property, et cetera, was a bit of surprise for some of us. And as we agreed last night. It's important to the chamber that the village put off this resolution, this vote. So thank you for doing that, to give everybody some more time to digest them. I know the business community appreciates it. Having some time to process what the changes could mean is really important to us. I think it was clear at last night's meeting that nobody is arguing that the village has costs incurred anytime the chamber or other local community organizations or nonprofits put on events using public property. The support of these type of events from the village police department and the Department of Public Works and everybody else is very evident. To any of us involved in putting these events together. And I personally and the chamber board have nothing but positive and grateful comments about departments involved, the staff we work with. Bruce Gaboni, Michael Cohen, D. Orley, Chief Drake, everybody just top notch of doing the jobs truly. Increase in fees for holding special events and parades, while significant increase from what we've been paying for decades is certainly not the sort of doubt please hanging over our heads in terms of the events we do. But the increase could very well mean the chamber having to rethink some events and we discussed this last night. I do want to make one point that occurred to me after the meeting. At Halloween time, there are two children's parades in Sag Harbor. And I think we were just sort of stunned over the fee changes and none of us thought to say. And I think we were just sort of stunned over the fee changes, and none of us thought to say that. So there's the Ragamuffin Parade, which at one point was under the auspices of, I believe, the PTA, but it's connected to the school in some way. When it was decided that they didn't want to be in charge of it anymore, the chamber stepped in. This parade is open to any families who want to come and join it. It runs from Nassau Street up to the lawn of Custon's House and is held on Sunday before Halloween. The Sag Harbor Elementary School also has a parade with a float, with a band, and each of the elementary schools has a march and a parade. This is for children attending Sag Harbor Elementary School only. When we brought up the fact that a fee of $2,000 for the Ragamuffin Parade would quite probably mean the end of the chamber organizing and holding that event, possibly. The response from, I believe it was Mr. Hay, was that the village should not intend to charge the fee to the school district. We discussed this a bit, and unfortunately, none of us brought up what I think may have been confusion, that there are two Halloween parades in Sag Harbor. That the Ragamuffin Parade predates the parade the elementary school does, and I believe, and I did in fact check this, but I discussed it with some other past chamber presidents, is basically kinked that if the PTA or the school decided to do a parade that was for Sag Harbor district children only. The Ragamuffin Parade ends with a party which is run by the drama department of the Bridge Hampton School District. Seems to me they probably stepped in and Sag Harbor school that out. But I wanted to clear up this confusion as we're moving forward with these discussions without needing to cast any kind of negativity towards Sag Harbor School District that is certainly not the chambers went with. And personally, I was on the school board for three years and present for one of those. And if nothing, it was positive feelings personally towards our fine school district. But I feel it would be helpful to, at some point as we move forward this, to understand why the school district wouldn't be charged for a parade that closes down Main Street, but Sag Harbor Chamber of Commerce will be. A final point I want to make as chamber president, and again, I'm a bit unaligned here, but because there really isn't enough time for full chamber board to be in, but on exactly what our official stance is, I'm just interpreting this from last night's meeting. Most of the events the chamber organizes had at the core one or both of two things. Bringing business to our membership and some money into the chamber to keep us going and continue to do what we do to promote our membership. And here's the second part, to offer Sag Harbor Village those events and experiences which many have expressed and feel makes Sag Harbor the very unique, special, and charming place that it is. And for the record, the chamber organizes the following: Harbor Fest, once known as the old Whalers Festival in mid-September; two arts and crafts fairs, one in June and one in September; the Ragamuffin Parade and the Pumpkin Trail, both in October; and Christmas Light in December, and Santa Vis, also in summer, and Harbor Frost in February. We've also organized various sidewalk sales in September and October, and recently did two shop local events which do not require permitting. Our events could certainly be considered off-season or very close to what we all consider off-season these days. These events help our membership by bringing in business. Contrary to how it may look to the public, business has not been great for many of our members in recent years. I believe most had for nodding yes last night at the meeting when our board member, Lauren McAvoy, said that Harbor Frost made kids' wits February last year. I know Nada and Gwen from the workshop were nodding yes, and Lisa Field from the variety store was nodding yes. Most of the board agreed. Sag Harbor Village has lost some of its largest starting businesses recently, and the concern that more will have to close is a valid concern. We are lucky that as a village, we've had relatively new businesses such as Kids' Wits and Sage and Madison and Dragon Hemp and other small up and come up and be involved with members of the chamber and the community. But small, non-chain businesses that stay open year-round and contribute to the community don't pop up very easily. And the diverse mix of businesses, many of them small, owner-operated establishments, is really one of the things that has made Sag Harbor stand apart from East Hampton, Southampton, Bridge Hampton, et cetera. The businesses that exist in the village are part of the fabric of what so many people love and are attracted to. Thank you for holding off this vote, and I hope that the chamber can come back to the village with some input that we all agree on and includes our official take. And I hope the village will try to consider the business community as residents of this village also. I know that your prior, your primary responsibility is to the taxpayers of the village and the residents. But I hope that you can start and continue to consider the village business community as residents of this community for the extent that they are and for what they contribute to the village and how the village would exist without the current makeup we have. So whatever the final outcome may be, we really appreciate that you put off the resolution. I know I've gone on board, but if I could just be indulged for one chance because I did have two long conversations with two chamber members last night. This is totally now coming from me as a 42-year resident of Sag Harbor. Over the years, I've come to believe that what sits Sag Harbor apart from other villages and makes it very special as a village, and I grew up in Stony Brook, which was also a very special village, is its character, its history, the waterfront, and its charm. Of those four things, two of them, the character and the charm, are to some extent, in my opinion, derived from shops, the restaurants, the businesses that are in the village. Those that have been here for a long time and those that have been attracted to the village and have popped up over the last few years. Without the diversity of small locally owned and operated shops mixed in with some businesses that have multiple locations but are for the most part year-round businesses in Sag Harbor, without the community these businesses had developed, some of them through the Chamber of Commerce, without the owners and operators' determination to be year-round businesses, even if it means struggling through some difficult months, Sag Harbor would cease to be Sag Harbor everyone seems to love. I said it right here at this point before, change is inevitable, and we all need to acknowledge that. But the rate of that change and how it is allowed to unfold are things that all of us, but especially the village trustees, have some control over. Of course, the responsibility, as I just said, as chamber president, to the residents of this village is paramount, but there is also responsibility to the business community and to help you make sure we do not turn into East Hampton, where most of the village shuts down for months at a time, a circumstance their village government is now desperately trying to reverse. So be it paid parking, increased special events fees, outdoor dining, or anything along those lines, I would hope that the village board would look at the businesses, as I just said, as president of the chamber, community, a community as residents of this village, as a big part of what makes Sag Harbor tick and what makes Sag Harbor special. And while the face of the business community is changing, and we just lost a few businesses that would be very hard to replace, which went a lot to the charm and character of Sag Harbor, while that change is here, has been here, and more is coming. If we all work together, maybe we can hold off things and perhaps even roll the calendar back just a bit, just a little bit, if we all work together. It's probably a bit naive on my part, but after talking to a couple of long-term Main Street business owners last night after the meeting who were feeling very discouraged, I felt that I would put this out here. This has just been from my perspective as a resident of the 11963 and someone who loves Sag Harbor.
Thank you, Ellen. Thank you. Anybody else wish to comment? Okay, so we'll adjourn this till next month. Somebody raise their hand? Okay, that brings us now to the sewer availability requests. We have one from Page Restaurant and one from 7 and 11 Bridge Street, Sag Harbor. Did you want to touch on this briefly, councilor?
Sure, these are just on the agenda because they'll be issued by actually the superintendent of Sewers, Wizard D. Yardley, not this board, but this board did adopt a master plan, and I just thought the applicants should be aware of it, so that's why it's on tonight's agenda.
I think that speaking, and I think I could speak for the board, that there's a lot to consider when tying into the sewage treatment plant. Our biggest concern is the safety and capacity down at that plant that we maintain safe and healthy operations down there. So anything that we do or give permission for has to take that into consideration. Obviously, we want as many people as we can get to tie into the infrastructure. That's the cleanest way to manage sewage. But again, everything is going down to the plant. We need to maintain a safe and healthy condition down there.
And it's a finite resource.
Right, so if expansion needs to be done, or if there's new technology that needs to be implemented, it's something that we have to make a decision on who's going to incur that cost for the expansion. So I'll just leave it at that. Does anybody want to comment on this, or?
Tiffany Sparlato, West Water Street, 36 West Water Street, Suite 202, for the applicants, Page Restaurant. I have both applicants on tonight, Page Restaurant and 711 Bridge Street. I have both engineers on the project. I have Benny Goniello here on Page Restaurant. I didn't know if the board wanted to discuss the proposed location of the grease trap. I know that's something the board was interested in.
I think that if I could interrupt you, Tiffany, I think that those things are being considered by our superintendent as to, you know, what the best process is for that, and, you know, again, safest and healthiest, you know, outcome. I think that, I think that we would agree that we're going to work together to accomplish that.
There is a process outlined already in the village code that dictates how sewage capacity is given out, and that's done by the superintendent. So I think as long as we follow that process and continue to do that.
Okay.
But if you have any questions for their engineer, for either Page's engineer or the engineer for 11 Bridge, 711 Bridge, they're both here to speak.
I don't have any questions.
I don't have anything else.
Anybody else? Okay, that brings us to our discussion items. Eleni Prieston, would you like to come forward and?
Looking for a good name of time, 100% of lighter. Subject, I'm Eleni Prieston, sent me to Wicked Top Lane, and I'd like to give you a visual and live tube. So you can see their passage, and that way it makes, when I'm. Okay. The place is somewhere in the village. As a local resident, Goldsmith, community member, retail store owner, curator, and mother and sister of challenged members of this town for the past five decades. I have many passions. One of them is Sag Harbor. Another one is travel. And while traveling in Provence this past spring, I came across these graceful benches in the shape of whale tails. And they are cast in aluminum. A light went off, and as a curator, I thought they would be the perfect set, a perfect set for the end of the wharf as a symbol of our history and our future promise of inclusion. I see this as a bigger picture than just benches. They also make a perfect cleat. I thought that was just great, and why at the end of the wharf. I immediately saw two of them positioned at the end of the wharf room, perhaps two on Marine Park. I've made whale keyflops and resurrected the tiny whale pendant that many people have bought from me, which has an image of the Sag Harbor cinema embedded in it, but I hadn't thought at this scale. At the start of this presentation, I mentioned symbolism. I don't think I did, but I see them as a symbol of vulnerability. And I see this more than just a sculptural bench and the way it's spent money that you don't have yet, or perhaps don't have. Perhaps they could be a symbol of the vulnerable and of the values that this village holds. Those challenged individuals like my brother, who will retire after 20 years working as a volunteer firefighter and village employee, and my son who works locally and has overcome many obstacles. The whale's been part of our local history, as we know, for hundreds of years, a creature of grace and intelligence which aligns with our values. Whales and humans share a few things. The fact that we both breathe air, are warm-blooded and give life birth, suckle our young, and have hair. Their tails have markings as unique to each as our fingerprints are to us. Did you also know that the great whale had, on average, sequestered 33 tons of CO2 over its lifetime? Thankfully, we've pivoted from hunting to protecting them. Our values have changed. We become more sensitive to those creatures, old and young, human or animal, who are vulnerable. And we are all aging, so we're all vulnerable. I'd like to think of these as reminders of our past and our future. To be inclusive is to consider the vulnerable or compromised among us, not that we need to be reminded, but I think as a statement of an amazing, you know, sculptural, useful thing. I'd love to see these somewhere, whether they're at Marine Park, but it makes sense as cleats that they be at the end of the wharf. Have no idea what the procedures are. I'm looking for our trustees and chamber members on their lead and possible sources of funding, and I'd love to see a plaque of dedication in the name of those who, in spite of their struggles, served anyway. Thank you for letting me make this presentation. I don't have much, in the way of specifics, I just put them to the man who casts these giant, they're big, giant tails. He's not local, which I hope is not an issue, but the price I have is from six months ago. So I don't know if that applies or not.
Thank you, Eleni.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to our action items. Resolution amending outdoor dining application submission and license fees. We have a submission fee for outdoor dining for $250. And then there's a license fee for $200 per outdoor seat in the village property. I just, in light of what Ellen just discussed as far as the chamber and their concerns, I'm not prepared to push this forward right now. I mean, I could certainly see the $250 application submission fee, but $200 a seat, I believe in the past it was $100 a seat. So does anybody on the board wish to discuss this?
You want to adjourn this to next month as well? So we presented and discussed this briefly with the chamber. Last night, we actually didn't even get to this. Part of the session, we discussed parking and the special events. But we can await feedback as well for next month. Still plenty of time before the season starts.
What's the genesis of this?
Same as the events fee. We have a fee structure in place in the code that we don't enforce. We have a process that we have enforced since COVID. And so this was recommended as a way to restart the process, restart the fee process. So there's currently outdoor dining on village streets. There's currently outdoor dining takes place in parking areas. There's certainly co-provisions that we just want to go back to enforcing.
I think that this was something that was during COVID, we didn't enforce because obviously the restaurants needed outdoor seating. And I mean, it's something we need to consider, but that, to me, you know, $200 a seat, that's a big, going to be a big number for a lot of these businesses.
I think $200 a seat is a lot.
So I think we need to.
Submission fee, because you want to know what.
Right, I think the submission fee is adequate because, you know, we need to have communication with them, and we need to have a plan to make sure, and our fire marshal has been reviewing the plans. But of course, that takes time, right?
Yeah. Also, if you have seats outside, you have to subtract them from inside.
All those calculations are being done, so.
So traditionally, have we charged per table pre-COVID?
We were charging, I believe it was $100 a seat.
Seats on village property.
On village property.
Not on their private property, just on village property. So it's not every.
Something we need to consider, but I would say that we should adjourn this until we get some feedback from the.
But when we give up village property, I'm not just trying to ease this out. We give up village property for private enterprise, for profit-making, there has to be some.
There is already an insurance certificate that Bruce has been very good on collecting to make sure that we're covered from a liability standpoint. But, right, but as far as a fee, we, again, we're going to have to come up with these numbers, you know, if we decide to do it.
Or to reinstate what you're, this is already in the code.
It's already there. It was funded during COVID. At $100, I believe it's $100.
I'm not sure what the existing is now, but it's also to clarify the process that the restaurants go through each year for that license.
We used to have, when, there was a period when the board would vote on these individually.
Individually, yeah.
And one of the criteria was that there were no open issues with code enforcement building department. And that was an opportunity every year.
Well, in the process, the process that this contemplates is, is actually, this doesn't come to the board to the end. This goes through the planning board with the building inspector. And they take all of it and check all the requirements first before it comes to us.
Right. And then we vote on issuing a license essentially.
But they've done all the homework and the due diligence upfront, so it's consistent with the CEO, et cetera.
Yep. Yeah, I think 200 is a little.
I think, so let's adjourn this till next month.
Yeah, we have time. Let's think about this, and let's get feedback from the.
From the chamber, right. I don't know how many currently, how many businesses are using village property and what the impact is going to be on them, but I'd like to have that before we make a decision.
Yeah, there's a.
So do we need a motion to adjourn this?
We just, motion to adjourn till next month.
Yeah.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Corish to have a second.
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor Haley was in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, so the action item is adjourned. Resolution, January 2025, resolution authorizing notice to proposers, RFP, for construction management services for village sewer service expansion, Sewer Sheds K and L. So this is the RFP for construction management.
Yeah, we're just about ready to issue the letter. What is the?
The notice to proceed.
The notice to proceed. We've essentially agreed on contracts, but we need to have a construction management company in place to oversee all the work. And that was split off from the original contract, so that's going to go out to bed. And that's what this is about. I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, motion by trustee Corish to have a second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Plum was in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Resolution regarding SECR for ADAC and the Boardwalk Project, which we had discussed earlier. We have somebody here from NPV. Mike, would you like to give us? Mike, would you like to uh give us your?
Good evening, Mayor Gardella and members of the board, for the record, uh, my name is Spike Russo, I'm a senior environmental planner and project manager with Nelson Pope and Voorhees with offices at 70 Maxis Road in Melville. As you know, uh, NPV was retained to assist with the SECR review for the proposed ADAC renovations. Uh, the project is identified as an unlisted action under SECR. And since the project involves improvements within a sensitive environmental resource, uh, that being Sag Harbor Cove, a full, long environmental assessment form, parts one, two, and three were prepared to ensure a thorough environmental review. We are also prepared the required coastal consistency forms which were submitted to the board along with the full EAF. Now, if I could, I'd like to share the plan, if that's possible, on the screen. Can you see that?
Not yet.
No.
Right there. You see it?
You see it?
Nope.
We can right now.
So you can see it?
It's coming up now.
Oh, okay, I see, someone's uh.
Putting it out from here.
Thank you.
Okay, it's page two. Okay, so as you know, the project is located north of West Water Street near the terminus of Garden Street and is adjacent to the Sag Harbor Yacht Club. Uh, the proposed improvements include removal of an existing cable mooring area located along the shoreline, which is in this area, if you can see my cursor. Uh, construction of a new pier mounted boardwalk, gangway and floating dock dock off the west shoreline that will accommodate various sized recreational boat slips. Construction of a boardwalk along a segment of West Water Street shoreline as shown on the plans here. Resurfacing and restriping of a nine space parking lot. And uh another boardwalk on the north side of that parking lot and a short refetment. Uh, then there's the ADAC facility, which also includes the boardwalk, a gangway, and then the floating dock facility. At the very end, there is a breakwater that's uh aligned sort of northeast, southwest at that location, so. Uh, as far as permits and approvals, we identified the need for village trustee approvals for the project financing, the SECR review and the overall plan approval. Uh, the Village Harbor Committee uh would do final LR LWRP consistency review. Southampton Town Trustees has wetlands dock and bulkhead construction permit authority. It's also within a DEC title wetland and would require DOS state coastal concern con coastal concurrence review. And then finally, an Army Corps of Engineers nationwide permit, so there's a number of permits that are required and in a number of reviews. With regard to the environmental review, the total project area is approximately 3.3 acres, which consists primarily of open surface water and a small strip of land located along the shoreline, including the nine space parking area mentioned earlier and the proposed landslide boardwalk areas along the shoreline. Based on the EAF Part Two checklist, we believe the project will have minimal impact on water, land and ecological resources with only minor temporary impacts such as temporary minor noise during construction, which is controlled by village construction hour restrictions. Uh, there would also possibly be some temporary minor suspension of silt in the water column from the installation of piles to support proposed docks and the shoreside installation of a small bulkhead and possible minimal backfilling of the bulkhead once in place. But these impacts will be very limited in terms of total area to be disturbed, the volume of backfill needed and the duration of work. And we would expect that silt curtains and silt fencing would be installed as necessary to contain sediment. In addition, it is expected that the proposed breakwater and bulkhead will help to further reduce any flood or erosion related hazards in the future. Uh, we determine that the project site is not within a Department of State designated significant coastal fish and wildlife habitat area. Nor is it in a designated coastal erosion hazard area, but it is within the DEC title wetland. And as mentioned previously, therefore will require compliance to any and all DEC wetland permit conditions. Um, nevertheless, based on our review, we don't see any significant impacts to the wetland. As far as endangered or threatened species, the only identified rare species is the endangered northern long-eared bat. And there will be no trees removed or habitat. There would be no habitat disturbed that would affect that species. So therefore, no significant impact is expected. Regarding local historical resources and historic districts, uh, this project area is located at least 240 feet uh north of the uh the existing village historic district. And therefore is not expected to have a significant impact and it is also located adjacent to, but not within identified archaeologically sensitive areas. The proposed dock renovation is a water dependent use that is consistent with the village's LWRP as indicated in the coastal consistency form. And it is compatible and supportive of area land uses which include a yacht club, restaurants, hotels and multifamily housing as well as uh it was consistent with the waterfront character of this area. So based on our review, we don't see significant adverse environmental impacts. And we recommend that a negative declaration be adopted. And I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
I don't have any questions, do the trustees have any questions?
I just have one question, um, it it took the $4 million bond, how how much of this project is that? Is that including the walkways or is it just the?
Yes, for the for the from the feasibility study and the um estimates that were provided to us, that'll cover everything.
And then you had mentioned some bathroom facilities, I presume, is that part of this?
I would like to, it's not included in the bond, there's some other ways that we could pay for that.
Okay.
So.
It was included in that SECR documentation, we didn't have any special designs yet, so therefore.
But I intend to push that forward.
Sure, that'll be another phase.
Have we gotten uh pricing on the construction yet?
Um, we have an estimate for what it is, yes, that that was.
For all RFP processes.
So um first we'll do the bond and we'll do all the postings associated with that and we'll begin drafting the RFP when we're when it's appropriate. We'll get it out because um it's very important that we can, that we would have all the DEC uh all these approval processes, which there are many um that take time, so clock will be a tight one. Um, hopefully November 1st, we can begin the work of um taking out.
First of when, next year?
Of course.
Right.
Yeah, of no, November 1st of this year.
This year. So at the end of this season, so we have one more season with the existing season, okay, yep, that makes sense.
And so the the goal is to have everything complete for season of 26.
Mary Ann, did you want to comment on something?
I do.
Mary Ann's a member of our harbor committee for those who are not aware.
96 Hampton Street, um, I know legally the board doesn't have to come to the harbor committee. And but we've had some issues like with things that happened at Johnstone Bank Park that might have been avoided as we needed to go to the harbor committee. And as far as I know, and I missed very few of those meetings, this has not gone to harbor committee.
That's not what I was told, there was a presentation to the harbor committee as far as I know.
They made a presentation, it wasn't an application, we didn't get back into the details. So it was not in any way a presentation, but then we said, well, that's really great, and we said, maybe we could have pump out. That's not the same thing.
So I I believe, Mary Ann, that the plan will, the plan will be um once we issue the RFP, so right now, this is just the proposal of what it's going to look like. Now we're going to have to go out and get the final um engineers who will be doing this. At that point, they will go through the the complete process.
Um, okay, it seems a lot of times it would be good to come and get our comments on specifics. Yes, we did it and yes, we're in favor of this project, but there are different issues that might come up.
So it it was just too premature to be getting into all the details until we go through the RFP process.
There's a lot of our details there, okay, that's one thing. The one thing that we have talked about that I think is good that I haven't heard mentioned is the possibility of having a pump out there at the end of ADAC and I would, if I asked you to do that, that would be helpful.
It's certainly something that we've discussed and when we get to that point, that will be and.
As far as I know, most of these vessels that are there do not require pump out services, they're smaller boats which do not have, which is more important, as I stated before, that some form of amenity is put down there, bathroom and.
I totally agree, I totally agree.
There's spackle buckets.
Bathrooms and a shower, at least like.
Yeah.
Right.
And the sewer system is right there, so it'd be easy to tie into.
It would be, alright, I think pump out would be great because some of those small boats, they still have um bathrooms heads up, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So any more questions for Nelson Pope and Voorhees?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So moved.
Uh, second?
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor Hale was in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, that brings us to the resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance the construction of improvements to village ADAC. And that we have to take by roll call. Aye.
Devin, you're heck.
Aye.
Trustee Ian Corish.
Aye.
Trustee Albert Palm.
Aye.
Trustee Jean Kay.
Aye.
Okay, so the motion is approved. That brings us to resolution authorizing Mayor Gardella to sign a memorandum of agreement with the County of Suffolk. This is for a one-time payment in the amount of $16,100 for public safety revenue sharing program. So this is a.
Just an additional, usually we get roughly like 190 something thousand if you got for apple cherries.
And this is an additional 16 on top of that.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Motion by trustee Corso, seconded by trustee Kane, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Resolution authorizing the mayor to sign harbor master agreement with the village of North Haven, this is something we've run in the past and just a continuance for 2025, have you have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, second.
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor Hale was in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Resolution to approve the service listing of the Volunteer Ambulance Corps Service Award Program, this is the LOSAP program. Um, this is uh the board's motion to approve their findings for 2024. Have a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hale, second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved, resolution to approve service listing of the Sag Harbor Fire Department Service Award Program.
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hale, second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Resolution to appoint Kathleen O'Grady as account clerk, so congratulations to Kathleen, she passed her test.
Great.
And uh this is a motion to appoint her as a count clerk.
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hale, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Chief Drake requests authorization for Sergeant Kelly Anderson to attend the Community Anti-Drug Coalition of America forum held in Washington DC from February 3rd to February 6th.
I'm not Hux, there is no case.
Hux is gonna pay for her.
I'm inviting Kelly as a guest.
Right.
That's great.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion deputy mayor Hale, seconded by trustee Plum, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Authorization to accept November 2024 bank reconciliations and collateral reports.
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hale. Seconded by trustee Kane, all is in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, so moved, authorization for the clerk to advertise for a tentative assessment role when received grievance day for February 18, 2025 from 1:00 to 5:00 PM. Tax sale for March 18, 2025 at 10:00 AM. Budget schedule for 2025, 2026 fiscal year. Village code 235 dash four, snow and ice sidewalks, that's a notice. Village code 20, excuse me, village code CH265 dash 43, parking during snowfall. I need a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, seconded by trustee Plum, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Approval to set date and time for annual village election on June 17, 2025 between hours of 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM at fire headquarters on Brick Hill Road declaring vacancies and to advertise all notices for village elections, I just have one comment on this, we seem to be having some issues finding people to work the polls for that many hours. So I would ask the board to consider possibly adjusting those hours.
Don't have days kind of?
Any restrictions to us for adjusting those hours, this is a long time.
That's what at least be from 12 to 8. And then a few years ago, we did a resolution changing it to um 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM, 12 to 9, sorry, 12 to 9, and then we changed it to 6:00.
There was a lot of people had reached out to me at one stage saying that.
They wanted to go early.
They wanted to go early so that they could, if they were gonna come out here to vote, if they were living in the city and here, but they registered to vote here, that they could vote it early in the morning as opposed to.
Oh, and then be able to go back?
And then be able to continue if the polls don't open till noon. And then you have people who work all day, so I don't know exactly what we do.
Well, the other, I'm just, I'm, all I'm doing is bringing to the board's attention that we're having difficulty finding poll workers, there are other ways that we could probably um help people to vote, early voting would help.
And then there's always a mail-in ballot.
Yeah, yes.
Which is something that we may want to highlight more.
Yeah, correct.
And that might be a way of, I'll I'll fix it and make it, you know, make the process really.
With that early mail voting, um ballot, there is no restrictions, there's no time travel, there's no walk out of town, you can just come in, get the ballot, that can basically turn it around the same day. Um, and then also with the absentee ballot, they've limited their um restrictions on to like some of the questions.
The reasons why.
Like.
Yeah, what's the last day you can do a mail-in ballot, can you come here the morning of the election?
The mail-in, I think it's a few days before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then do you know how far in advance those early voting ballots are available, roughly?
Once we know.
We can start accepting applications for them, I believe in February, I'd have to go back and just double check the timeline and then once the ballots.
I think it's once we know who the candidates are and then you know who they're.
Which is April, May, when is that day?
April is the first day you can start a petition, May 4th, I believe, is the date of return.
So it's May 4th, really?
Right.
So you can start accepting applications in February.
I mean, let's see, let's do the best we can to keep the polls open because I think that's a fundamental like right and responsibility of the village, you know, obviously if we can't get polling workers, how far in advance would we have to change this and what would be the process?
I'll have to look it up.
I do know from working the polls myself, there in East Hampton, um, some people were able to do half day. But I don't know whether that was just because it was federal versus village, that's.
And can we have early voting or just mail-in?
Yes.
No.
Where would early voting to happen?
You just.
By mail too.
You can bring it in.
Absentee ballot.
It's an absentee ballot.
Get it mailed to you, you can pick it up, it's it's basically the same absentee ballot application.
And can you pick it up and drop it off at the office here?
Yes.
As opposed to using the mail?
Yes.
Oh yeah, absolutely, we accept both both forms, both um absentee ballot in person and early mail as well.
Okay, I think if we got that message out, that was.
You need a registered voter.
Maybe it has a paper.
Yeah, because people get squirrely about election changes.
Of course.
About poll changes.
The optics, I mean, to change, you're you're saying that we're gonna go from six to nine and then change that time and and restrict the amount of time that somebody can exercise their right to vote.
Yeah.
Because it's not very, I mean, it's not something I agree with personally, but we're having problems.
How many, how many?
Getting people to work the polls.
I mean, if you think about the, I think I voted last time at like a nine or 10 o'clock in the morning and they said like three people had been there before me.
Right.
Is there a minimum number of poll workers who need it?
Yes.
For for poll workers that. Four, four poll workers that are there at five thirty in the morning, and then I don't think they were done counting the votes because we don't have those machines anymore, um, was eleven thirty, twelve o'clock.
It's all paper ballots and you.
It's all paper ballots because of the primaries, so we don't, we don't have access to any voting machines no longer, so.
And you can't count the mail-in ballots until the polls close?
That's right.
Correct, and you.
That takes a while, so we're gonna have, it's gonna be longer at the end of the.
So they don't leave until ten o'clock, eleven o'clock at night?
But if we change, if we.
I would, yeah, I would feel more comfortable if we changed it. If we're gonna make a change, make it from nine to nine. At least cut out the three hours.
Yeah. We could do, definitely do that.
Right, and then push forward.
All of our notices are published in the paper.
And obviously, the more mail-in ballots we have to open and, and process after nine o'clock, the, the more time, that seems to take a long time.
That three hours might not affect that that much, so.
And we can't start processing mail-in ballots until the polls close in state of New York.
So do I have a motion to?
Think about.
Put this resolution forward? But amend, amend the times from six to nine to nine to nine for twelve hours.
Can we, do we have to do that tonight? Do we have time?
No.
I just think we should raise the profile of this out there. I think this is, you know, we can do it in February and we'd still be.
Just have to check the dates. Hold on one second. Can we come back to this one? Can we just move on and come back to it?
Uh, we can move on and come back, that's fine. Okay, so that brings us to our next action item, which is authorization to refund the following small claims assessment. It's the forty-five Dennison Road LLC for a hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents. Have a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay, second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Plum, all is in favor? Opposed, so carried. Authorization for Kathleen O'Grady Accounts payable and Alexandra Bolseris, Deputy Treasurer, to attend the following: Introduction to Governmental Accounting, that's online on March fifth, twenty twenty five, and March sixth, twenty twenty five; Accounting Principles and Procedures, online, April ninth, twenty twenty five, and April tenth, twenty twenty five, Deputy Treasurer only. I'll move it. Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane, all is in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, so moved. Hillary Offenberg requests authorization for commercial dock usage of transient dock number one for the purpose of sunset and day cruises.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Corse, all is in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, so carried. Richard Chivoni, Secretary of the Sag Harbor Fire Department, requests authorization to move Robert Jehoda from active probationary to full active member status.
I'll move it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane, all is in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, so carried. So let's move now to, we'll come back to that other action item. But let's move on to action items, special event and special use permits. Ellen DeGuardi, President of the Sag Harbor Chamber of Commerce, requests permission to have the fourteenth annual Harbor Frost on Saturday, February eighth, twenty twenty five, from one to six PM along Main Street, Long Wharf, Windmill Beach, and Steinbeck Waterfront Park. Events activities include ice sculpting, live music at restaurants, outdoor games, polar bear plunge, and fireworks. Lastly, requesting to place a sign on the grassy area of Long Wharf, Route one fourteen, and Mash Hashem Mewit Park from January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty five, to February eighth, twenty twenty five. Do I have a motion? Motion by trustee Plum, second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane, all is in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, so carried. Andrew Bloadon, Chief of the Sag Harbor Fire Department, requests permission to hold their annual department picnic on Sunday, August seventeenth, twenty twenty five, at Havens Beach from twelve to five PM. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay, second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Corse, all is in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, so carried. Andrew Bloadon, Chief of the Sag Harbor Fire Department, requests permission to hold their annual carnival fundraiser at Havens Beach from Tuesday, August fifth, twenty twenty five, through Saturday, August ninth, twenty twenty five, with fireworks display on Friday, August eighth, twenty twenty five, also requesting a rain date for the fireworks display on Saturday, August ninth, twenty twenty five. In addition, he requests to place signs on Long Wharf, Mash Hashem Mewit Park, and Route one fourteen from July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty five, to August ninth, twenty twenty five. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, second?
Second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Hale, all is in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, so moved. Do you have any information for us?
It's the last day that I can publish a notice.
My only issue with this, if this had, if, if the agenda had said nine to, nine AM to nine PM, I think it would be fine. We would have given people notice of the agenda, but to come into the room with a six AM to nine PM and then just change it, I think we would be best served to, if we have the time, to do it at February meeting. If we meet.
Well, we don't have time. Well, what is it, February? February, so we have time. So let's, let's adjourn this until next month.
And we'll do, um, the idea is nine.
That gives you time to post it. Yeah, that gives time to give notice, and also, you know, we need to start to ramp up the, you know, voting, you know, early.
And do all of that, and we can make.
February eleventh of PM.
All right, so we'll move this action item to next month.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
And February fourteenth, so we're okay.
Okay, so that brings us to approve the payment of bills. Motion to approve the payments presented in warrant twenty-eight in the amount of four hundred sixty-six thousand, sixty-three dollars and eighteen cents. Warrant number twenty-nine in the amount of seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-four cents. Warrant thirty in the amount of five hundred dollars. Warrant thirty-one in the amount of five hundred twenty-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents. Warrant number thirty-two in the amount of thirty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty cents. Do I have a motion to approve the payment of the bills? Warrants twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Corse, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane, all is in favor? Opposed, so carried. That brings us to our public comments section. Fifteen minutes public session, input for comments and questions, three minutes per speaker. Anybody like to speak? Nada?
I see your boy scouts back there. I commanded them. I'm sitting quietly for an hour and a half. And not even having an intention to see maybe when it was throwing winds.
They get a badge of patience for that.
What I do want to say is I want you to, would love you to consider being a member of the Chamber of Commerce and Business uh, of the Wharf Shop, to have a different fee for special events at off-seasons. I don't know the dates and so on, but to consider the varying.
When, in other words, when, when the event is taking place? Thank you, Nada. Anybody else? Former Mayor Mulcahy?
Kathleen Mulcahy, thirty-five Prospect Avenue. Um, rather than doing nine to nine, what if it was eight to eight? Like, take some off the backside so that you can count more faster and get out over a minute.
That's something we should take under advisement.
And I wouldn't go all the way to nine AM because there are people who have to be at work and they do want to vote before work. So if it could be like eight to eight or eight to seven thirty, yeah.
Right.
Just think of that too.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Makes sense.
I'm Marilyn Holstein, um, Vice President of the Sag Harbor Chamber. Um, not speaking on the cap of the chamber, but I'd like you to consider with your fee structure, it might be per property rather than one blanket fee, um, for one event. For example, if you have an event just at Marine Park, it would be one fee versus having a fee for like all four of your properties. So I'd like that under your consideration, careful consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, come the boy scouts.
Uh, I have to sit my name and I. Quincy Renau, uh, five baby drive west. Uh, we just wanna say thank you for like, um, you know, welcoming us, like welcoming us to like sit, like, like listen to your.
You're very welcome. Thank you for gracing us with your presence.
Yes.
Is it okay if I ask a question?
Of course.
You, you have to introduce yourself.
Let us know who you are.
I'm Ashley Freeman. I live at two seven one Madison Street, Sag Harbor. I was just wondering, uh, from a monetization perspective, how much do we rely on, kind of like, like, out, like outside, um, like the city? It's like I used to live. So I used to live in the city and, um, when I lived there, I would come out here like during the weekends. And so I'm just wondering, how much do we rely on like, like from a monetization perspective, like people from the city?
I don't have an exact number on that, but I consider all residents in the village, residents of the village. So if they're here and they live here and they pay taxes, then they're one of my constituents. It doesn't matter to me if they have a residence in the city or not. That's not important to me. What's important is that they're part of our, uh, community and that they contribute and that they're good neighbors. Who do you mean by we when you ask the question?
Uh, I meant like, people who have a house out here, but usually live in the city and come out very much for leisure.
If they have a house out, they're probably contributing to the tax role, but they're also contributing to the business community as well. Um, which is, as you've heard earlier today, is a vibrant part of this community. So they contribute in multiple ways.
I know, and parking on Long Wharf, where we get, so we can analyze that at the end of the year. About half the people who park will leave a zip code because of their credit card. And it's mostly New York City on Long Wharf, next is Connecticut, as you could imagine, then Massachusetts. And it runs down the East Coast. We have the, I, but the number of zip codes, um, credit cards from the one-one-nine-six-three area is really, I don't have the exact number tonight. I would like to say after, out of thousands and thousands of transactions, it's maybe four or five hundred. Now, that may be local people just don't park there. They don't want to pay. You know, there are all different sorts of reasons that meet, people make decisions, but that's just one indication. It's, it's massively out of town. There's mostly New York City on Long Wharf.
Charles, did you want to comment on something?
Yeah, as Deputy Mayor Hay mentioned, we, we collect a lot of money from traffic infractions. And I don't know if we have statistics, but I imagine the bulk of those are from people who don't, from people who don't live here.
Yeah, I don't think we analyze by, by zip code like that, but that's probably true, although I'd love to get some more for the U-turn to Main Street.
Well, Mr. Porfis, I have your question.
I just thought, I just thought it interesting when you guys were talking about, uh, like eight, a hundred thousand for parking tickets alone.
Yeah.
I was just thinking, probably it's mostly for people who don't live here full-time.
Sure, that's true.
That is a true analysis, yeah.
But also some from employees, um, as we've heard over the course of this year too.
I've had a few.
I had at least two. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good question.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to comment?
Yep, Eileen Rosenberg on. Good evening, Mayor Gardella and Trust Village Trustees. I'm actually the truth leader for Sag Harbor, Truth four five five. And thank you so much for welcoming us. Our, our charter organization is the Sag Harbor Fire Department. For almost thirty-five years, they've been sponsoring the Boy Scouts, and we're now a triple of seventeen. And the boys here are learning about civics and they're trying to get their citizenship, um, and community badge. So thank you so much.
Always welcome, yep.
Hello, everyone. My name's, uh, Kevin Minard. I'm the owner of Dragonhat. Uh, I actually live in Bridgehampton. Is it okay if I speak?
Of course.
First of all, I want to thank you guys for your service tonight. One of the things that's come up a little bit, um, especially in the business community this past summer, uh, it seemed there was record people, um, in Sag Harbor, record parking, um, more volume of people in traffic than I've seen, uh, the past few years. But in talking to other businesses, um, sales were down, um, across the board. And I heard that some of the restaurants were down twenty-five to thirty percent. It was down in T-shirt shops. So it wasn't just the high-ticket items. It seems like it was across the board. So, um, what I'm considering, I, I was wondering if the, um, the village does any sort of economic impact to kind of see what's going on, what's causing it. I don't know if you guys work with one of the universities or with the county, because, you know, the Hamptons and the Sarasols have been this, um, interesting bubble when it comes to, uh, the economy and not being affected as much as other parts of the state, but this year was really interesting. And was just wondering what's going on, so if we can, um, make any changes for next year. Um, you know, it's something I want to take on personally. Definitely want to interview all the, um, businesses, but also want to look at the consumer side to see what's happening. I think that anecdotally, um, from talking to different brokers, it seems like the, uh, real estate, the rental market was down this year. Uh, there seems to be a lot more people doing Airbnb, uh, coming in for shorter times, and they might not be as committed to Sag Harbor. They come in for a few days, they get their reservation at some of the high-ticket restaurants. They walk through town, they have an ice cream, they go to the beach. We had a really great weather this season, so they probably spent more time at the beaches or on the boats than shopping in Sag. Anecdotically, there were, you know, fewer people walking down the streets with shopping bags. There were tons of people, but not a lot of people shopping. Um, so just curious like what's going on, so I don't know if.
I would say that I, I'm also curious, because I've heard that, I've heard that, um, and it's, I, I, I'm, I'm like, how can that be? There's so many people here. There's so much, you would think commerce going on, but you're saying it's not.
It's not. I noticed just from Dragonhat alone, um, I opened three summers ago, and every summer it's gotten less. And, you know, this, and also December, December was like super quiet out here. I think we're going back to pre-COVID, more kind of resort seasonal, uh, uh, economy. But I think also there's, uh, in being in the shop, there are a lot more people coming in from Mid-Island this year, who may be coming in for the day, um, which, you know, is really kind of impacted traffic. Um, so, you know, just something I was curious about.
I would, I would definitely welcome you doing what you want to do, which is gathering information and then coming back to the board and reporting to us.
Sort of aggregated across everybody so we can start to see trends.
I, I would say I, um, very much agree with you on the, uh, lower number of summer rentals. Um, we certainly saw a change go from, when majority of rentals used to be Memorial Day to Labor Day. It went to maybe a month, and now it's gone to two weeks. Um, and I would say over fifty percent of the normal rentals, from what I understand, did not happen this year. Um, so that's a big, that's a big change.
When it comes to Airbnb rentals or that type of short-term, we don't, like the village code, I think it's two weeks, two weeks is the minimum.
Twice a year.
Two, two weeks, twice a year, and we really, from a code perspective, are encouraging people to rent for longer. And we don't, we, we don't participate at all, and, and we.
It is a demand and.
And then we also have a re, a rental registration so that there's more transparency to the villages, who is renting. Um, so there are controls that we introduced before this season, before the last season.
But to answer your question, we don't do any economic impact studies.
Yeah.
Like the answer to your question.
Right, thank you.
Economists, et cetera.
Yes.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. Anybody else? You said someone, Eileen?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. Um, this is Eileen Rosenberg, ten Carver Street. And, um, I'm speaking on behalf of, uh, myself, uh, as well as the Environmental Action Advisory Committee. Uh, Mayor DiNara and I had been, have been in touch with, um, trustee Plum and trustee Kane regarding that, uh, roof, metal roof glare. And, um, I would say that, um, they've been very responsive in, in talking about it. And we agree that, uh, more research needs to be done to determine whether this is something that can be codified. Uh, in the meantime, um, I'd like to make, um, two points. One is that, uh, the color of the roof does make a difference, but also whether it's flat or gloss makes a difference. I would like to commend the HP ARB, uh, because they have acknowledged that this could be a potential issue. And in their decision-making, they have started to inquire about the nature of the metal roofs and how much reflectivity there is that might disturb the neighbors. So I think just increasing awareness, whether this gets codified or not, it might be premature to determine that. Um, I think that, uh, it's already made a difference in terms of, uh, the acknowledgement that it is a potential issue for some neighbors. So, um, I guess we'll continue to correspond with trustee Plum and trustee Kane on this. But, uh, I want to acknowledge the HB ARB.
Thank you, Eileen.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?